Guys, a quick curveball as we get out of the gate here. We're going to try to get Mr. Michael Williams on his way for other commitments this afternoon, which means we are moving up the docketed item for the Oldham County Board of Education Annual School Capacity Standards Discussion. So, we don't have any docket items to read for this, do we? Mr. Williams, the floor is yours. Have we sworn you before this day?
No, not today.
Well, let's get you sworn.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so what you have before you is my annual report that comes to you based on our projections and our live numbers as of month one. Little background for those of you who are new to the commission. Every year, the district has me do projections. I have now done it for, what, well, probably 28 years? 28 years.
My recollection.
A long time. I will teasingly say during Mr. Schultz's administration, I was known as Rain Man because there were several years, even with somewhat of a decline in enrollment, that I actually hit it by less than a thousandth of a percent in the number of students that we had. That number is slightly a little bit higher this year, not a lot. It's probably, I missed it by maybe a tenth. But each year, based on the capacity ordinance that the school district has with the county, I am to report the number of students or the number of students that we get from a household. At this point, based on this current year, is it 1.157 students per building unit? When you look at our numbers based on, and I give, there are actually four different sets of projections there for you all to look at. The most important one will actually be the biggest one, and that is the 10-year enrollment growth in comparison. So that gives you the last 10 years of our history. And you can see that for the last four, actually five, we have had negative growth in the county. But ultimately, based on the number of building permits issued per year is what something that goes into my calculations for projections. The number that we are going to propose this year to you all is .128 students per building unit. And I am more than happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
All right, commission, questions for Mr. Williams regarding the board's recommendation of .128 students per unit for the next year?
Correct.
And I realize I pulled the sequence on you just a little bit here, but if I'm premature, but if there are no questions, then I will also open the floor for motions. Mr. Douglas, is that you?
Mr. Finney has a question.
Mr. Finney, you got a question?
We still have this large overcapacity, I guess, what, 128.100, almost 129% in...
At South Oldham High School?
South Oldham High School.
If you look in that last column, Mr. Finney, it says capacity changes. Those are the capacity changes that are coming based on the renovation that South High will get, I believe, starting at the end of this year, at the end of this school year. And so that will raise South High's capacity to almost 1,500 students. So it will be comparable to Oldham County High School at that point in size. They're getting massive renovation and massive additions over the next, I believe it's three years. But we will start, as soon as they start construction, we start counting that capacity toward that number.
Well, that should level it out.
It will level it out some, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, other questions? Other questions or a motion? Mr. Douglas, do I see you moving that direction?
I was going to ask a question, but I was going to wait after the motion for discussion, but I'll just ask the question.
You can do either one.
Okay. These new standards, does this change the next thing that's coming up in the next agenda?
Well, since I've already written it for Mr. Shum, he will actually, in the calculation, gets 28 per year. So it just... So, Mr. Douglas, what it does for me is it tells me how many students I can expect.
Correct.
It doesn't totally change that final calculation of the ratios that I use. I looked at those again this year, and they seem to be holding consistent. So I'm not making any recommendation to change those ratios. So those ratios would stay the same, which would still then net Mr. Shum 28 for his upcoming...
Because mine says 24.
Well, that's an older one. I found a mathematical error in it.
Oh, okay.
And so I withdrew it from our board approval. That was the one from, I believe, when we did it at Technical Review Committee.
Okay.
And so I found a math...
That's okay.
A mathematical error in it, so I withdrew it. So I have a draft copy. Our board will approve it at our February meeting, just because I had to pull it from our...
Okay.
So it would be 28.
Okay. Binding element.
All right, other questions? If none, floor is open.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve or accept the Oldham County Board of Education Annual School Standards, Capacity Standards, which I believe was thought to us .128.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Douglas. Mr. Baxter, we got a motion and a second. We good?
Good to go, Mr. Chairman.
All right, discussion. I think we'll go with a voice vote on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Mr. Williams, thank you. All right. Now, let's get back to some fun. Ms. Edgar, will you please read the next docket item?
Docket PZ-25-003, application has been filed by JS Realty for a preliminary subdivision plan for 83 lots to be known as the Estates of Ballard Woods, Section 2, located along Ballard Woods Parkway, Ballardsville. I think that's Smithfield, whatever. The property is 175.5 acres and zoned AG-1 Agriculture District, CO-1 Conservation District, and R1 Residential District.
Anna Barge, Senior Planner.
Anna.
Back here again.
Glad to see you. Let's go.
Yeah, there were some discussions about whether it's Ballardsville or Smithfield.
Oh, give me one second, please.
I need to recuse from this one because I own property in Ballard Woods. And while I haven't attended any meetings, spoken with anyone, or even read the documents that we have, I feel like I need to excuse myself.
Very well, thank you, Ms. Kraus.
Is that okay? And then I'll...
Okay.
He's getting ready to slide a two-by-four through the doorknob there, so, all right.
Okay, before I completely get started, I do want to, and they can talk about this as well, the application did say Ballardsville, and I did talk to a staff member who lives in that subdivision that may be in this room. Anyway, in the, not this preliminary subdivision, but right over there, was an adjoining property owner, whether it's Ballardsville or Smithfield. So there was some discussion there. I think it's the Smithfield Post Office, but it's technically Ballardsville, so, you know. Where I lived in Georgia last, you could use either, it's shared a zip code, and you could use either town name. And I've seen that in Texas as well. So, anyway, there's the docket. But yeah, that's just a federal USPS thing. Anyway, zoning like was stated, it's AG-1, CO-1, and R1, and it's currently being used for agricultural purposes. They're proposing 83 single-family residential lots in this Section 2 that is being considered today, and the total acreage is 175.5. So their pre-application was October 9th, 2024, with their neighborhood meeting being November 18th, 2024, and their TRC meeting being December 18th, 2024. The agenda was posted on the website, just like all the rest, on December 30th, and the adjoining property owner notices were mailed on January 10th of this month, and the public notice appeared in the Oldham era on January 16th. So the site history is kind of complex on here, just because of how many different planning commission approvals have happened in the surrounding properties, and I just wanted to add this in there, just to give some context for everybody. So in 2005, the Oldham County Planning Commission, this is specific to Ballard Glen, which is not what's being considered today, but an adjoining neighborhood. So for Ballard Glen in 2005, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a request by Jordan River Development Company for a zoning map amendment for 258.71 acres from just AG-1 and CO-1 to add in residential in addition to those two zoning districts. And they also approved that same day a preliminary subdivision plan for 184 single-family residences and four large tracts on 314 acres, and that was to be known as Ballard Glen. Additionally, in September 2016, the Planning Commission approved a revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Glen, Section 3, which consisted of 44 homes on approximately, or 44 single-family lots on approximately 40 acres. And then they approved a revised preliminary subdivision plan for Section 2 that day. And then May of 2018, they approved a revised planning, preliminary subdivision plan for the road layout for Ballard Glen, Section 3. So now to Ballard Woods. So in October of 2002, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a request by Christian Development for a preliminary subdivision plan for 105 lots on 203.4 acres zoned AG-1 and Conservation to be known as Ballard Woods. Then in July of 2018, JS Real Estate applied, and Oldham County Planning Commission approved a preliminary subdivision plan for 33 lots on 54.3 acres zoned AG-1 to be known as Ballard Woods, Section 5. So this is the plan presented, and y'all have that included in your pocket, in your packet. And this is section, we're calling this Section 2, and Jim might be able to clarify on here. I believe this is Section 1. It's gotten a little bit complicated in the different namings, and I'll get into detail why some of that is later. So this is just slightly more zoomed in of their plan. And then this is the approximate layout of the lot, and you'll see Ballard Glen subdivision right here. And then that's R1 in this section, AG-1 here, and then on the little outskirts, it's CO-1. So the Oldham County Future Land Use Map predicts the use of this track will be single-family future subdivision, and the proposed plan appears to be in conformance with all zoning and subdivision regulations, and does not have any waiver or variance requests. So the 100-year floodplain does align the eastern part of the parcel, and you'll see that noted on their plan presented to you. And I also included the TRC comments in your packet, if you had a chance to review those. So the notes. The applicant is proposing a preliminary subdivision plan comprised of 83 lots on approximately 175.5 acres. Section 5 was renamed Estates of Ballard Woods after rejection by the Homeowners Association of the existing Ballard Woods. So that's why they had to rename it something, because the existing subdivision did not want this new section north of it to be part of them. I don't know all the details on that, they can explain why. But, so now Section 2 is what's, Section 1 was already approved, and then Section 2 is what's being considered today, due to the revision of lot layouts, reducing the number of lots significantly, and replacing the curbing and guttering in the plan with ditches for stormwater drainage. And like I said earlier, the property is mostly zoned R1 and AG-1, with small portions being zoned CO-1. So the lots will be single-family residential and will range from 1 to 5.8 acres, and the access of two Estates of Ballard Woods will be through the existing Ballard Woods subdivision. And a traffic assessment was deemed necessary due to the traffic generation numbers, and has been included in your packet. The Oldham County Board of Education, that number's wrong based on our discussions that we just had. So that number, maximum number of lots, should be 28, not 24. So just keep that in mind. So this is just kind of an overview of this preliminary subdivision. The total site area is 175.65 acres with 33.3 acres of open lot space. You'll notice this on the big plan that was provided to you, and 83 lots with a net density of 1.5, five dwelling units per acre. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval of the preliminary subdivision plan for 83 lots across 175.5 acres. Here are the binding elements. The approval applies to the plan presented at the January 28th Oldham County Planning Commission public hearings. There should be no subdivision of any lot into greater lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. And thirdly, the preliminary plan must comply with all federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at time of construction plan approval.
Thank you, Ms. Barge. Is that all from you?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Siliman.
I'll start on this slide. And as with any subdivision of this nature or size, again, you hear me say this a lot since it's greater than one acre of disturbance to the developer or applicant, when they submit plans for construction, that'll be for the purpose of issuing an Oldham County Stormwater Management and Erosion Control Permit, and also they will have to get the KYR-10 permit from the Division of Water. Any impacts to blue line streams or jurisdictional waters will require coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers Division of Water, as has been the process for the earlier stages of this project. And as Anna mentioned, this, I shaded this blue area, this was part of the Estates of Ballard Woods subdivision. That's been, it's nearly constructed, 12 lots. And we look at this other, this other area is what would have been, well, this would have been the rest of Estates of Ballard Woods, and the proposal is to take this portion of Ballard Glen, Section 3, which was 44 lots, and remove the proposed bridge crossing North Fork of Floyd's Fork, and make it a part of Estates of Ballard Woods only being 10 lots. So that reduction of 34 lots, but combining it into the Estates of Ballard Woods. And if you read the TRC notes, what we asked the applicant to provide was because in 2019 in June, some of you were on this commission, we had a discussion with the applicant about the impact of the traffic on Ballard Vista Drive. And at that time, of course, there was a trip distribution between Ballard Glen Estates of Ballard Woods and Ballard Woods, because it could, you could cross the bridge. And at that time, after the discussion and review of collision data, the traffic impact study that was provided, tools that are used to analyze left turn lanes, in coordination with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, it was determined that a left turn lane was not feasible because of right-of-way and cost, and that at that time, the binding element was set in place that the applicant was to provide some maintenance to ensure site distance on the curve at this point. Because here's where Ballard Vista Drive ties into Kentucky Highway 22, that's what we're talking about. So there was a binding element that for a period of 10 years after first approved construction plans, that they would basically be on call if we needed to have some clearing done on that curve to provide site distance. And that's been successful between, I think, between us having to request that of them a couple times, if there's growth on the side, or if the state's maintenance, which goes through about twice a year and does that maintenance anyway. So that's been, I think, successful. But back to this, again, they did provide the traffic impact study that supported, I think, the thought that even though this connection's being separated, the new trip distribution is not going to affect that previous decision. Again, you're talking about reducing 44 lots that may have been going through that subdivision anyway down to 10. So I would concur with their traffic impact study that basically upholds that the left turn lane is not feasible at this time, or for this development. Also, I think, I'd like to recognize that we also see that the reduction of 34 lots reduces 34 septic systems, contributing to potential North Fork, Curry's Fork. So from a stormwater standpoint, there's a benefit to the reduction of lots. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Mr. Siliman. All right, commissioners, any questions for staff?
Mrs. Gabeet, you're okay with the ditches?
Oh, that's a great point. So, correct, other change, which is requesting the, from curb and gutter to roadside ditch. A roadside ditch cross-section is an acceptable design practice in our subdivision standards, and it's, you'll see it in some contemporary subdivisions, so we have no objection.
Further questions? Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Siliman, are those ditches conducive to sidewalks and everything through there?
There are not planned sidewalks.
There are no planned sidewalks in there?
And I don't think there were in the original subdivision, correct, so there's no change to that.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions, staff? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Siliman. We'll move into presentation from applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Swansburg, you want to go ahead and get your team sworn?
Yes, sir, let's do it.
Do you solemnly swear? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Siliman, you don't mind if I just kind of keep this on call? I like this slide right here. It's way better than I would have done. Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Baxter, Ms. Edgar, good afternoon. I know it's been a long day, so I'm going to go ahead and try to run through this as efficiently as I can, and talk to you all about this proposal. And Ms. Barson, an excellent job, as she always does, in terms of presenting this information from the staff's perspective. I want to put a little more meat on the bone for some of these issues, and then, of course, make the ultimate pitch to you on behalf of my client, JS Real Estate LLC. And just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I didn't indicate who I am, but I am Mike Swansburg with the law firm of Swansburg and Smith, 117 West Main Street, right here in La Grange. And for Mr. Fisher's benefit, that's across the street from the courthouse. Okay, I would like to start off with the ask, right? What is it that we're doing here? Why are we here today? And the applicant comes before you all seeking, I said reapproval, but in many ways, it's a reorganization, as you've already kind of heard, but a reapproval of some kind of a preliminary plan for a major subdivision to convert this property, which you've already seen, to this particular plan that you've already seen without, I might add, particularly in light of earlier today, the need for variances or waivers of any existing regulations. I want to talk a little bit about that background again, just to make sure everyone understands kind of where we are, if you're confused at this point. So, real quick, in 2002, this body approved the development of 105 lots on 203.4 acres for a subdivision to be called Ballard Woods. That's the purple circle generally that you see on the screen. And then three years later, this body approved the development of 184 lots on 314 acres for a subdivision to be called Ballard Glen, that's in red. So we've got Ballard Woods, we've got Ballard Glen, they're located in Ballardsville, which I will use, because if I think of Smithfield, I'm going to start thinking of Henry County, and I have to recuse myself if that happens. So Ballard Glen, Ballard Woods, those are the two subdivisions we've got here. And again, the circles are more for approximations, don't hold me to the exact scale on either one of these. But these were the two original proposals. Okay, so then in May 2018, this body approved a revised subdivision plan for a Section 3 of Ballard Glen, that's in red. Again, it's a little better than the actual proposal, but approximately in that open space area. And at one point, as was already indicated by that really nice slide that Mr. Siliman had, it was going to connect with the remaining portion of Ballard Glen via a bridge across the North Fork of Floyd's Fork. And then two months later, this body approved a revised subdivision plan for a Section 5 of Ballard Woods, which is in purple. And per the HOA, as Ms. Barge already said, this section would be named the Estates of Ballard Woods, because Ballard Woods didn't want them just to be a continuation. So that's why we have a different name, again. So again, talking about two different areas, ultimately that were proposed at one time, there was some interplay, we've got a new proposal now, which we think, in the ultimate scheme of things, is a better proposal for everybody. Last bit of background, as of today, just for everyone's benefit, again, no construction has occurred in that approved Ballard Glen, Section 3, that's in red. It's still an open space, no bridge has been built. And Section 1 of the Estates of Ballard Woods, consisting of those 12 lots which are in purple, have been constructed and nearly built out, as Mr. Siliman has already indicated. So here's the plan. I'm going to go a little bit out of turn. I usually like to start off with here's the law, then we talk about that, but just for background purposes, I want to continue with the plan, and then I'll get into the law. Proposed Section 2 of the Estates of Ballard Woods consists of 83 lots located on 175.5 acres, and as you've already seen on there, it's a mixed zoning of AG-1, CO-1, and R1. And these 83 lots will attach to the existing 12 lots in Section 1 of the Estates of Ballard Woods. What am I talking about? Again, just for everyone's benefit, we're talking about developing the red today that will attach to the purple within it. And there would no longer be a bridge that would connect that undeveloped portion to the existing Ballard Glen development. Okay? So we're talking about developing that bottom section of the circle there that's undeveloped to connect with the top part that's undeveloped, ultimately attached to the purple side. We're going to leave Floyd's Fork, the North Fork alone, and develop just on one side of that body of water. So again, under the previously approved subdivision plats that this body's already seen for both Ballard Glen and the Estates of Ballard Woods, the property to the right on your screen there included 87 lots from the Estates of Ballard Woods and 44 lots from Section 3 of Ballard Glen, for a total of 131 lots, right? So you had a combination of some kind within that space to be approximately 131 lots total. And if we include the 12 that are already built today, or that are almost finished today in Section 1 that I've talked about, this proposal will reduce the total number of lots by 36, and will increase of the size of the lots, particularly on the southern portion of that development, from about half, a little more than half an acre, 0.6 of an acre, to between 1.2 and 5.0 acres per lot. So we're reducing the amount of lots, we're increasing the size of each lot, and there's obviously some benefits, as Mr. Siliman's talked to you about already, for that particular change. We think this is a better plan ultimately. Let's go back to the law now. So guiding standards, right? We're talking about a subdivision, so we need to look at the subdivision regulations. And Sections 1.2A through K set forth a number of guidelines, among others, when considering subdivision development. One, for example, to guide future growth and development patterns in Oldham County in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Two, to protect and conserve the value of land throughout Oldham County and the value of buildings and improvements upon that land, and to minimize the conflicts among the uses of land and buildings. Three, to minimize the pollution of air streams and ponds, and to assure the adequacy of drainage facilities, to safeguard the water table, to preserve natural features, and to encourage the wise use and management of natural resources throughout the county in order to preserve the integrity, stability, and character of the county and the value of that land. And the last one I've highlighted for you today is to preserve the natural beauty and topography of Oldham County, and to ensure appropriate development with regard to these natural features. So those are pulled from the subdivision regulations themselves, in the context of what this body should be looking at when a subdivision proposal is put in front of it. Let's talk a little bit about that. First, I have the comprehensive plan. One of the things I always like to do is give you all some sections of that plan, which we believe this proposal comports with, that you all may use if you so consider to approve this. And we think in this particular case, that this proposal complies with or comports with land use objective LU-1-1, which relates to its compatibility with surrounding land uses, land use objective LU-1-2, which relates to the management of development in areas of environmental concern, and land use objective LU-2-1, which promotes connectivity between neighborhoods and compatibility with adjacent development. So again, I think those three sections of the development plan are implicated here in a positive sense from our perspective, and support this particular proposal. So plan, we talked a little bit about this before, just want to highlight it again for everybody, the proposed Section 2 of the Estates of Ballard Woods, again, as the comprehensive plan says, promotes connectivity by adding to the existing Ballard Woods subdivision and Section 1 of the Estates of Ballard Woods, right? And so that's that area that's highlighted in red. And there's 12 lots in that section there, there's a little more than 12, but basically there are 12 lots within that circle that are already developed as part of the Section 1 of the Estates of Ballard Woods. And what we're talking about is just expanding that at this point. We're talking about continuing that particular development that already is underway. And note, again, this proposal deviates from previous proposals that connected this land with the Ballard Glen subdivision via the bridge across the North Fork of Floyd's Fork. I just want to keep emphasizing this, and that connection, again, is no longer an option. So we're promoting connectivity with the existing Section 1 and the existing Ballard Woods subdivision, right? We're just going to continue right on with it. We're just going to continue right on with it. Another part of the comprehensive plan that we think is important, of course, is the impact of this on environmental concerns or environmental areas. Proposed Section 2 accounts for the natural features of the North Fork of Floyd's Fork, which runs right through that property that we're talking about and on the eastern boundary that's highlighted in red. And this proposal ensures that an adequate buffer exists between the development and the North Fork of Floyd's Fork, which minimizes devastation from a potential 100-year flood, because part of that would otherwise be in a floodplain, except we've actually designed it to not be in the floodplain at all, in addition to construction, pollution, or runoff concerns into the North Fork. So, again, we're not going to, part of it, again, about the severance, the lack of bridge, is you're not going to have a creation of a bridge over the body of water, which is going to require not only a number of permits, but a lot of concerns and remediation for ensuring that there's nothing that's going to ultimately harm that body of water. So, we're talking about taking away those concerns and making sure there's enough of a buffer between the development and the North Fork of Floyd's Fork to ensure that we keep that stream as clean as possible. We think that's also important as part of that review with the comprehensive plan. Some additional points. Some of you might be asking the question, well, why seek the approval of a subdivision that reduces lots if you're a developer? And the answer to that, of course, there's a couple of reasons why. First, a lot of it's economics, if we're going to be honest. Part of the approval of this section of the old three, again, a bridge was supposed to be connected to this section, and the cost of that bridge, and there was a discussion earlier today about bridges and what that might cost. And there have been estimates done, some rough estimates done, on what the cost of a bridge between Section 3 and the remaining part of Ballard Glen might be with all the various requirements that might have to come into that. And then, the estimate is to be north of $1 million for a bridge in this section. It's just simply not economically feasible. In addition, we always talk about the 44 lots that are approved for the old Section 3 were to be serviced by a centralized onsite sewage treatment system at that time, under the previous plan, and the cost of that system has also escalated to be projected in exceeding more than $1 million. So, you're talking now about $2 million for a bridge and a sewer system alone, and that's not even taking anything else into account with regard to the construction of this particular section. The economic stuff is simply just don't work anymore for that purpose. Some additional points, we talk about curb and gutter, that was identified in the, in Ms. Barge's presentation. Drainage system is astronomically higher in terms of a cost than it was five years ago. And it was also planned, and Mr. Vinsan can speak more to this in depth than I can, but my understanding, of course, is that it was planned with R 1 zoning in mind, which allows it to occur on lots as small as 25,000 square feet. Of course, we have lots here that are much larger than that, and the new Section 2 would include roadside drainage, which is consistent with the subdivision regulations, and it's typically found in subdivisions in this county with lots of 1 acre or more. And in short, like I said, the new proposal will reduce costs while also still complying with all of the normal requirements of the Oldham County subdivision regulations. So, it just makes more sense for the developer to also do it in this way. So, a little summary of our request at this point. Respectfully asking you all, of course, to give final approval of preliminary plan to construct a new Section 2 of the Estates of Ballard Woods, again, without the need for any waivers or any variances. I just want to make sure I emphasize that, no waivers or variances needed in this case. And on the basis that the plan comports with both the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan and the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations, in part, the sections that I talked about, by, among other things, again, promoting the health, safety, and welfare of Oldham County through the institution of a well-designed, forward-looking subdivision that provides additional housing for Oldham Countians, right? Talk about increasing the tax base, that was an issue that was brought up in a presentation earlier today. You increase the tax base by introducing more taxpayers, and this is a way for us to also do that. Two, protect the character of Oldham County and encourage orderly and beneficial development through a revised subdivision proposal that contemplates economic realities that I've just discussed, while also protecting those environmental interests that we've identified. Three, you protect and you conserve the value of land in Oldham County, and you minimize the conflict among the uses and buildings by extending the existing Estates of Ballard Woods subdivision into the proposal that we're talking about, and, of course, for any other reason that you all might seem as being appropriate in this particular case. So, with that, I am done with my particular portion of this presentation. I know there were some discussions about, do you want me to go ahead and just say it now? One of the issues that was brought up, we were talking about transportation and the conversation with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and there was a binding element a few years back on the developer about maintaining that entranceway at Ballard Woods. And the developer was going ahead and just proactively proposed that it would agree to a continued obligation of that responsibility as part of this particular proposal, Mr. Chairman. So, it's not included in the binding elements, but we would go ahead and proactively offer that. As the developer says, he'll go ahead and continue to maintain that, the maintenance agreement that was first instituted a number of years ago as part of this proposal here today as well. And did I miss anything? If not, any questions, we'll be certainly welcome to answer those as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll circle back to that. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Speaking in support of this application? All right? And then, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or with questions about this application? Ms. Barge?
One comment from the public. It's from Doug Kramer, I don't know, I could be spelling his, or saying his name wrong. It's spelled K-R-E-M-E-R, so apologies if I said your name wrong. But he's from, he says, "From Doug Kramer, President of Ballard Glen Community Association, I wish to comment about the option of a connection between Ballard Woods and Ballard Glen. It's a design directive of the county for subdivisions to be interconnected when possible. Approval of the proposed plat would remove any possible pathway and forever halt interconnection of the two neighborhoods. If utilities are extended to connect the two, then construction and easements will need to be put in place within the proposed Ballard Woods plat and through the creek. Why not just make the road and bridge, which had been planned at that location from the beginning? Both subdivisions have long, narrow, and winding entrances bordered by many trees. Ballard Glen has previously had its entrance completely blocked by downed trees after a storm. I think both neighborhoods would benefit from alternate pathing. The developer purports repeatedly that both neighborhoods are against interconnection. I would like to state that my neighborhood has not been asked what we are desirous of."
Thank you, Ms. Barge. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this application or with questions about this application? Seeing none, we will move into questions from the commission commissioners. What questions do you have? Ms. Nasser, is that you?
Yes. Are these on septic? It's 1-acre lots, yes.
Can I get somebody to the podium for that response, please? Thank you, sorry.
Bob Vinsan, Vinsan Engineering, Land Surveying, 1,000 Cherrywood Place, Suite 200, La Grange, Kentucky. After all that, the short answer is yes. If anything in Oldham County that is 1-acre or greater is on a standard sanitary septic system.
Okay. And I was going to ask what type of?
Yes, and we have, we've dug all the holes. We haven't done it recently, but we've dug all the holes with Charlie Ward and done the evaluation, and he's good with what we have there.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Douglas? Okay. Is your mic on?
Sorry, did you hear me now?
There we go.
The question was that during the TRC meeting, Russ Rose from the Oldham County Water District had asked the applicant, are they still going, they still wanted to have a water connection north of Blakemore Lane? Do you?
Okay, so, Mr. Rose did bring that up in the discussion, and we agreed to a connection through Ballard Glen to create a loop for them. There is no adjacent property available at this point in time to go to Blakemore Lane, which is approximately 1 mile away.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Walt Schum, J.S. Real Estate, 1,000 Cherrywood Place, Suite 300, La Grange, Kentucky, 40031.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I have anything?
For the questions. All right, guys, I'm going to assume that we don't have questions of the opposition testimony, so, Michael, where we are here, those are the end of the questions. I don't think we have, well, you have an opportunity for rebuttal based on the content that was read for the opposition.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, the only rebuttal, there are two reasons, it's not a rebuttal so much, it's just, again, an identification. I talked about it in my initial presentation, the reason why we're not building the bridge anymore, of course, is because of the cost and, of course, the redesign of the subdivision to what we're trying to propose at this point. So, that's a reason why we're not moving forward with the bridge. With regard to the question or the statement about not getting input in some way, Mr. Schum reminded me that actually there was, there were questions asked as part of a neighborhood meeting about input, and so, there were opportunities to have those conversations. But, again, we've put forward, we think, a plan that ultimately is a good idea and a better proposal in the end. So, I just want to make sure, those are the only points to clarify.
Should we take that, then, as your final statement?
No.
No? Come on up to the mic.
Walt Schum, 1,000 Cherrywood Court, Suite 300. The final statement is that Ballard Glen has connectivity available through three other ports, one to the east, one to the north, and also one adjacent to the property we're proposing to the southeast, southwest. Those are already in the Ballard Glen subdivision. Those farms are yet to be developed, but those stub roads were created at the time that subdivision was built. At this point in time, we have no other access to Ballard Glen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schum. All right. Final, done?
In terms of final statement?
Final statement.
Oh, skip to final statement. The only thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, in this sense...
We're not rebutting much, right?
No, I apologize, and I appreciate that. Again, just for the benefit of everybody, I really appreciate, again, the time today. I know it's been a long day, just to reiterate for everyone, for purposes of emotion, which I would hope would be in an approval sense, but, again, I'll just throw it out there, that we would argue that this plan comports with the comprehensive plan, particularly the sections I've identified, LU-1-1, LU-1-2, and LU-2-1. And, again, in that, it does, accomplishes a number of the things that we've already talked about. As we said here, it's going to be 36 fewer lots than was proposed previously and approved by this body. So, it's going to have less of an impact on the environment, it's going to have bigger space, which is going to, again, in the grand scheme, we think, is a better development plan overall for that part of the county and for the subdivisions that are already in place and to which, at least in one instance, they're going to connect. And so, with that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate everyone's time, I appreciate everyone's attention. Respectfully ask you all to approve this request, and I'm going to, otherwise, sit down and yield back whatever time I might have.
Thank you, Mr. Swansburg. Mr. Fisher?
All right, so, you've heard the evidence and testimony from the applicant. And in your staff packet, on page 3 of this case, you'd have motions to approve and deny the preliminary subdivision plan based on objectives of the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and our subdivision regulations. You've heard Mr. Swansburg here in his closing talk about a few objectives of the comprehensive plan as well. In addition, you've got proposed binding elements at the bottom of that page, which do include, the approval applies only to the plan presented at the January 28, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. There shall be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. The preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of construction plan approval, and Oldham County Board of Education has limited the applicant to the development of 28 lots per year. With that, I think that frames it up.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Commissioners, make sense? Everybody, everybody good? Questions?
Did I forget one?
They included the one that we volunteered in terms of the maintaining agreement.
Oh, the road maintenance agreement commitment that they had made?
Oh.
You may have been...
Yes.
Correct.
It's the one that was set a number of years, that continues to be in place, we would just continue that.
So, the developer is currently engaged in some maintenance for right-of-way sightlines and so forth along highway, along the highway, Highway 22, and has agreed to continue with that commitment. Is that open-ended, or is it?
No.
All right. How does it, how does it define?
The original binding element was agreed to for a period of 10 years.
Okay.
Walt Schum, 1,000 Cherrywood Place, 300, Suite 300.
So, it's within that existing earlier commitment to a 10-year period?
Yes, that's right. We'll continue with that agreement.
Very well.
It is already a binding element of the approval of Section 1.
Fair enough. All right. So, do we need to include that if it's an existing commitment?
Probably not, Mr. Chairman.
That's kind of where I am.
I mean, they've already said they'll do it, so they got to do it with regard to the original Ballard Woods, so...
All right. So, if you guys don't mind, we're not going to... Okay? We're not going to attach it to this one, you already have an existing commitment. Ms. Selman, we're good?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, guys? All right, Ms. Davis?
I make a motion that we approve the preliminary subdivision plan.
Is your mic on? Get a little closer to that mic if you don't mind.
I propose that we accept and approve the subdivision plan for PZ 25003 for the Estates of Ballard Woods. The motion includes all the binding elements that were read, and it meets the subdivision plans in Oldham County.
Mr. Baxter?
Ms. Davis, I believe Mr. Swansburg made reference to some sections of the comprehensive plan that he thought were acceptable.
They are acceptable.
And you accept those as a party of motion? Then I think we have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
A motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, thank you. All right. Discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, we will move into roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Fox is not here. Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody?
That's where you should be.
It's just dwindled way down.
There you go. NPZ-25-003 approved on a vote of 7 to 0. All right. Okay. That address again? Truly. Ms. Kraus, welcome back, we are now barricading the doors.
No one can come and go.
All right, everybody good? We'll move into the next docket. Ms. Edgar can go ahead and read the docket, please.
Are we reading the table?
Do we need to address the table item? Mr. Baxter?
No, because I don't, has it ever been before us?
No, not to my knowledge.
So, no.
Okay, so, yes, we're just skipping it.
Docket PZ-25-005, application has been filed by the Jeff Watts Roy for a waiver of Oldham County Subdivision Regulation, Section 5.7E, Joint Access, Fourth Parcel on Access Easement, located at 5400 West Highway 42, Goshen. The property is 142.5 acres and zoned AG-1 Agricultural District and CO-1 Conservation District.
Ms. Barge, you again.
Me again. So, this one is solely an...
So, this one is solely an access waiver request, access easement waiver request, fourth parcel on an access easement. Like was mentioned, it's zoned AG1 and CO1 and is currently 142.5 acres. It's currently used as agricultural and residential. So, the site history, a variance was approved in 1994 to allow a parcel to be created with no road frontage. If today's item is approved, the, I wrote this before, when we reviewed our applications, they did submit an application for the Board of Adjustments in time for next month's meeting in case you do approve it, so they can continue this process and not have to wait two months. But, they will have to be granted a road frontage variance if this is approved today, like a lot of agricultural parcels. When they parcel off just the house, they typically also have to ask for a road frontage variance. So, this was posted to the county website also on December 30, because that's when the agenda was posted. The adjoining property owners, owner notices were mailed on January 10, and the public notice appeared in the Oldham area, like the rest, on January 16. So, this is the existing parcel. As you can see, kind of the red line that points to the north part of the, of this photo, that's where the access easement goes out to the road. So, it's zoned a mix of AG1 for this portion and CO1 for that portion. So, I had a typo in the staff notes, so just note, reference my, number one on my presentation and not in the staff packet. So, the applicant is proposing to create a minor plat that will create a 2.501 acre tract from the 142.5 acre parcel. So, the new tract is the one that's going to include the primary residence and the detached garage. I misspoke in my staff report and had the opposite, so they're creating a new tract just for the old, original farmhouse and the detached garage on there for the applicant to live in. And you'll see that noted in their application and justification. So, when they split the lots, the access easement would now have to have four parcels utilizing that access easement, thus requiring a waiver. So, the proposed lots are zoned AG1 and CO1, which require road frontage, as we discussed before. If approved, they'll have to obtain that variance from the Board of Adjustments to continue forward with this process. So, the applicant is requesting a waiver of this subdivision regulation we've talked about extensively today, Section 5.7E, for the approval of a fourth parcel on an access easement. The application, or the applicant will prepare a minor plat and a shared road maintenance agreement between all parties involved. So, these are those two sections that I've talked a lot about today, Division 020 and 030, which are the AG1 and the CO1 sections of our zoning ordinance. And those are the ones that, you know, have that minimum lot width, and they'll do the variance. Since they're not doing a subdivision plan, because it's just a minor plat, they have to go to Board of Adjustments. So, here's that, Section 5.7, no more than three parcels may take access from any single street encroachment. So, these are just some site photos, you know, before it snowed, when it was a little bit prettier outside of the property. So, this is that original farmhouse that will be minor platted. So, these are just existing utilities right here that cut across this property. That's the existing two-story farmhouse, existing detached garage, and this will be that driveway, as you can see, and then the residual 140.02 acres for the residual amount of property. This is just slightly zoomed in, if you want to look at that. So, in summary, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the Oldham County subdivision regulations for Section 5.7E for the approval of a fourth parcel on an access easement. So, the way, the potential conditions of approval, same as the rest for that first item, which is that the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the January 28, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. A road frontage variance must be obtained through the Oldham County Board of Adjustments and Appeals, which they're on the agenda for next month for that, if, in case this gets approved. And then, a minor plat and survey must be submitted to staff for review and prior, or in approval prior to the issuance of any building permits. So, if anything gets built on that land additionally to what's existing, they would have to get the minor plat done first. So, and then, finally, a shared road maintenance agreement shall be prepared and agreed upon by all parties affected and recorded with that minor plat.
Thank you, Ms. Barge. All right. Mr. Silliman, anything from you? All right, guys, any questions of Ms. Barge on this application? Mr. Douglas?
Maybe I'm just, it's been a long day.
It has.
Can you go back to the plot or the plat? Where are we talking about? The, I guess, access easement waiver or the access easement?
So, there are already, let me go back all the way. So, there's already more than four parcels taking off of this, and I probably should have had our GIS zoom out a little. I'm sorry, there's three parcels right now, so this parcel, and then if you go up to the main road up there, there's these two parcels, I believe, and I'll let the applicant correct that. He can, I'll leave it on this slide for him, but there's already three different parcels, and so they're creating a new, I can't remember if it's the 5,404, but I believe it's the 5,400. One is where they're building the new house, yeah. So, or not building the new house, but creating the minor plat. So, it'll be right here where the, so...
Because it's not, it's not drawn on this, correct?
Well, because it's such a big property. Are you talking about the plat?
Yes, the proposed tract, is that what it is?
Yes, that's where the new tract is going to be.
So, it doesn't show where, we're just concerned about the access easement on the main road.
Yes, yes, so this would be part of their, when they submit for their minor plat, this will be what's submitted, yeah.
You can sort of see on that location map up there.
Can we go back?
My screen isn't working, so I can't.
Oh, this one, or go back?
The top right, the location map on the...
Yeah, sorry. Yes.
I mean, you can sort of...
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of confusing, because, I mean, I'm looking at, it says proposal residual, and then you look at the arrows, and then it's like, sure would have been.
And just to elaborate, too, so the reason why they've got to go to the Board of Adjustments for the variance, because I know we've heard waivers and variances all together today, is the way our regulations are wrote is those can only be heard if it's in regards to a preliminary subdivision plan or a zoning map amendment. So, because these are separate, they actually have to go to the Board of Adjustment, so I don't want that to confuse anybody on why we don't get to hear those together at this one.
Were you asking where the passageway easement is? Yeah, well, I mean, I know there's existing 40-foot. It wraps down this 2A... Yes. And ties into this corner, and that's where you see it tie in here. Okay. So, it goes up and around like that. So, this point here is this point. Right. I just didn't know that easement is already there. They're just coming in for a waiver because of putting... Correct, they're showing as it existing, serving those other lots already, yeah. Right, okay.
I think where it gets confusing is what we've considered earlier today, so, yes.
I got you.
All right, for the questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Barge. We will move into presentation from the applicant. Let's gather your name and address and get you sworn.
Yep, Jeff Watts Roy, 1329 South Third Street, Louisville, Kentucky.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm really just here to answer questions. I don't have a presentation. I can just maybe justify or tell you why we're wanting to do this, if that helps. So, how do you go back? Oh, it's this wheel, good. So, one correction here, this 5,404 was a structure that burned down two years ago, so I don't know if that affects anything, probably not, because it was on the large parcel. But, this, this chunk of land, if you were to follow this yellow line up, and this yellow line over here was part of a Revolutionary War grant of 600 acres. It's been wheedled away, different generations, you know, giving it to their kid for a dollar and that sort of thing. So, we have this part that's landlocked, so this is a .6-mile driveway. And when I grew up on this farm, there was just the old stonehouse and then the house that burned down, which is the one I grew up in. And then, my grandmother gave my mother and my aunt these two plots. We're all three in the will, so it's, I'm kind of treated like a child here, but just to kind of explain this, this lay of the land, that circular driveway there, this lot kind of cuts into the top part of it, so it still leaves this part open, access to the barns and whatnot. So, my grandmother is in memory care at Masonic Homes, and she's wanted this farm to stay in the family, which we all want to do. So, instead of trying to sell chunks to keep funding her long-term care, because she was a dairy farmer, she had worked at Walmart, so she was in the ladies' changing room if anybody ran into Mabel Tingle. Long story short, she's run out of money, so my wife and I proposed to buy this parcel, which will cover her for probably another three to four years for long-term care before we have to think about chunking off some of the farm and selling it to our neighbors. So, that's kind of why I'm here and why we're doing this whole thing. So, if there are any other questions, happy to answer.
Question for counsel. Who has standing to bring actions on this property?
Well, keep doing that. So, just so we're clear, do you own part of this already, or?
No. I'm just a POA.
So, you're, all right, so you are, but you are like, and often we have these situations, people come before us where it's contingent upon them getting the necessary approval so that they can close. So, who signed the application?
I did.
As power of attorney?
Yes.
Then I think he has the opportunity to do that.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, others, questions? Let me cover a little protocol here. Go ahead, Sam.
We've got, we're, we're, got a variance request, requested here to allow more access to this easement that goes out to Highway 42. We're adding an additional thing on it, selling property to maintain your mother's benefits so she can continue to live in assisted living or extended care, whatever. If it comes time to sell more property, are we going to need more variances? In other words, are we getting into the cat chasing his tail here?
I mean, I can answer that just from interest in our property. So, our neighbors to the east are Ashbourne Farms. They've already expressed interest in the farm. To the west, Scott Jackson, who's asked to buy land, they both have road frontage. The only way that would come up is if we decided to subdivide or do something like that, which our family has no intention of subdividing the property ever.
Mr. Finney, I think we got, it's kind of a two-part response. So, what, and I know, and we talked about this a minute ago, Ryan did, it's a little confusing in how, what we're doing, but he's, they're asking for a waiver to be allowed to have more than, it's three's the number, right? More than three people use an access, to access a piece of property. So, that's request, and the other statement that he made is relative to his justification of why he's doing it. And, you know, he, in three or four years, they run out of money, and he comes back, we got to remember that he told us all this before, and he comes back and asks for a, for a fifth parcel, that might be a problem. We don't generally, I think we, I have a recollection of there being one off of 329 that had five accessing off of a common driveway, but, you know, we try to avoid this because of maintenance issues and that kind of stuff. But, I think that, I think he is, he understands, he's nodding his head, he understands that if he comes back in three years and needs another one, he may not get favorable treatment based upon the fact that he did it this way in the first place, because we might be looking at a subdivision at that point.
Well, we also ran into the same similar thing happening on Halls Hill Road, I believe, where the guy was doing access of one place after another on the same little driveway, and I think we finally just turned him down. But, I understand your situation. What I'm just trying to get into is granting waivers, granting waivers, and granting waivers, and all we're doing here is granting waivers for rules we've made and we're not sticking by. So, it gets to be a, why do we have the rules?
Right.
Again, I understand your situation, and I'm not trying to make, make, make light of it or anything, I'm just...
Well, I understand. I think if we did have to come, you know, face that, I mean, my grandmother's 95 years old, she has dementia, so, I mean, it's morbid to say, but if she's still around in three more, three, four more years, we probably would just end up selling the whole farm, most likely.
All right, for the questions? All right. Little housekeeping here. Anyone else present wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? All right. So, commissioners have asked all the questions that you have to ask? Would appear so. We'll dispense with rebuttal and finals. Moving into motion-making now. Mr. Fisher, will you set the floor for us?
All right, so keep in mind, this is for a waiver request. So, this is a waiver of allowing the fourth parcel access to an existing easement. On page two of your staff report, you have motions to both approve and deny the waiver, whichever you so choose, based on evidence and testimony you've heard today. Potential conditions of a waiver, potential conditions of approval. The waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at today's January 28, 2025 Planning Commission public hearing. A road frontage variance, which the applicant has already applied for, must be obtained through the Oldham County Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Minor plat application and survey must be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits. And a shared road maintenance access agreement shall be prepared and agreed upon by all parties affected and recorded with the minor plat.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, commissioners, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we will move into opening the floor for a motion on the waiver. Spin the wheel, right?
All right, regarding docket PZ-25005, I make a motion to approve the waiver due to several items. One, compatibility with the current land use. This is just separating out an existing lot into one smaller tract that's currently going to be used in its form it's being used now. So, therefore, it's not creating any other environmental impact or impact to the property that hasn't already existed with this. I also want to include the binding elements as stated by Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Ms. Nasser. Mr. Baxter?
Good to go, Mr. Chairman.
Motion on the floor, do I have a second?
All right.
That is, Mr. Finney, thank you. Discussion. We'll move into roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And motion to approve the waiver requested, PZ-25005, has been approved on a vote of eight to zero. All right. Ms. Edgar, you good?
Yep. Docket PZ-25005. Yep. Docket PZ-25-006, application has been filed by, by the Alyssa M. William Withrow for a waiver of Oldham County Subdivision Regulation, Section 5.7, joint access, fourth parcel on access easement located at 10801 Little Pond Road, Goshen. The property is 3.79 acres and zoned R1 residential.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And Ms. Barge, you'll have the presentation?
Yep.
Okay.
So this is a property owned by Alyssa and William Winthrow. It is zoned R1, and is currently being used as residential. It is 3.79 acres in size. So there's no site history on this property. For the case history, the agenda was posted to the website on December 30, 2024. Adjoning property owner notices were mailed on January 10, 2025, and public notice appeared in the Oldham era on January 16, 2025. So just to go ahead and kind of clarify some things, when you're looking at this picture, you see this Taylor Lake Road. This is not in a formal subdivision where the parcel being considered today. It's just right next to an existing subdivision, if that makes sense, like a neighborhood. And I'm not sure if that neighborhood has an H2A or not. So the zoning is all R1 here, and then behind them, that's not in this parcel, is AG1. So the applicant is proposing to create a minor plat that will create a 1.1 acre tract and a 2.62 acre parcel, and splitting the lots to access easement would now have four parcels which take from it, which access from it, thus requiring a waiver. The proposed law is zoned R1, which, that zoning does not require road frontage. So the applicant is requesting a waiver of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations, Regulations, Section 5.7E, for the approval of the fourth parcel on access easement. The application, the applicant will repair a minor plat and a shared road maintenance agreement between all parties involved. So this is something that we just discussed briefly yesterday, when we realized it, looking at the plat a little bit more. And let me go ahead and go to that plat. I'm going to kind of skip ahead. So we noticed yesterday, when discussing this case further, that the access easement width is only 30 feet, and so we weren't sure if we could, and we might need your information on whether a waiver could also be considered today for that access easement width, or would they have to come back to Planning Commission?
When did you guys?
Yesterday.
Okay. I don't know how we want to do this, because we realized yesterday-
It's supposed to be 40, right?
Yes. And it's 30.
So it's actually only 30 for the last short segment?
Do you need to be sworn? He needs to be sworn, right?
Yeah, let's go ahead and gather your name and address. Get you sworn.
William Aaron Withrow, 10801 Little Pond Road, Goshen, Kentucky, 40026.
Okay.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Would it be possible to get the projector?
Can we get the projector?
There he goes.
There we go. He's on top of it.
So as you mentioned, the, the last segment does have a 30-foot width. However, from where it goes, from the public maintained road here to a single lane drive, it is a 50-foot width. And it is for the majority of the private drive until it gets past our mailboxes. Which, this is kind of a broader look at it. This is our existing parcel. This is our neighbor Joe, whom grants the easement. And it is 50 foot until my mailbox right here. And then this is essentially just our existing driveway that rounds that corner. This was the original developer's lot, Taylor Hayes, and there is currently not a residence on this parcel. It has been torn down. Who's the shared? Who's the shared part?
I don't know. You can't ask me these questions at 3:55.
Your all's endurance is commendable today.
And so we lose the needed width on someone else's property, correct?
If we switch back- If we kind of switch back to here, or, no, I guess you can show it where it changes from 30, where it changes from 50 to 30.
Yeah.
Is it on your property? Okay, yeah.
Just to be clear, the question was, because we discovered this yesterday when reviewing these dockets, not, not so much whether the question can be asked, but is it okay that it wasn't included in the original application, that that be incorporated in the request today, and not have to have him come back? We recognize, we recognize the same thing, that it tapers down to 30 right before that, but technically, you're asking for a 30-foot easement when our, when 40 foot's our minimum, so.
And, and I guess to further expand my, my bit of information, this 30-foot wide segment, we are really the only users of that.
Are you the owner of that?
We're not the owners of the 30-foot wide segment. Our ownership starts at this property line here.
When was the 30-foot easing for there?
I believe it was 96.
So to reiterate on Jim's comment, we were just trying to see if the waiver of the access easement width could also be considered today, so that he does not have to come back to Planning Commission again. So we weren't sure if we could consider both of them today.
I, I'm going to apologize to Mr. Withrow for what I'm about to say, but I can, I get concerned about precedence of things, recognizing that, you know, it's a very small thing. I doubt anybody's going to complain, but the first item you had on the agenda this morning was a waiver of an access easement width, and that's the very first thing we considered, and it's not something that's before the board. I don't think the board can consider something that has not been advertised and that notice hasn't been sent out. I, again, I don't think anybody's going to show up and complain. I'm not, I, it seems like a no-brainer to me, but I just, I would be reluctant to say that, that without notice being properly sent out, and, and the application reflecting that that was relief asked for, that that's problematic in my mind.
So, but we could still consider what is here today, and then it's contingent upon the approval of the access easement? Is that what needs to be, access easement width? Would that be how we proceed forward?
I mean, we can, we can do that, or we can table it and hear it all at one time.
Another bit of information, no additional utilities are going to be traveling through this segment. They're already on site.
Does he have any documentation saying he owns that easement? I don't think it matters because of the width, because it doesn't, it's, it's 30 feet. It's still never, we're still going to have to get a waiver, even if it's for one foot over the property line.
This is, yeah, and this is not on self-contained property ownership as well, so-
Correct.
You know, it's public notice, and I acknowledge that it's not likely to generate any, any opposition and so forth, but frankly, I'm afraid we put you at risk by trying to move forward with it in the interest of the time, and I hate to deprive you of that, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to hit this target a little bit closer to the center to be able to move forward on it.
Quick, just a question. Could one of the binding items be the neighbor signing off on the 30-foot segment before any advancement?
I, I mean, hi, his approval is fine. It's the public body's approval that you got to have, because, because you've got a regulation that, again, nobody's here, nobody cares, nobody's going to-
Believe me, if I would have known this was required, I would have certainly-
But, but, I mean, the, the approval is the purview of this body, and, you know, your neighbor saying it's okay, I mean, doesn't change the fact that there's got to be-
Downstream commitments become at risk, and that means it falls on you, and that's in our business to put you in a way of risk.
Sure.
You know?
Understandable.
Would it be best to table this case?
I was just giving-
And then add in, when we renotice, the additional waiver, and then that way, he can still go to the Board of Adjustments next month, a binding element then in the-
Planning.
No, but the Board of Adjustments case for the variance.
That's the other guy.
Oh, yeah, that's the other guy. Forget it. It's 4 o'clock.
I was going to make the recommendation-
He doesn't want to go to the Board of Adjustments?
Planning Commission and consider both.
I don't own it. I would if I owned it.
What if the contingents, it was contingent on it being 40 feet?
I still want the refuge of notice because of a claim downstream that could pull that decision away from us and away from you. And if you have costs sunk into that type of decision, it becomes a stickier problem.
Sure.
I, I can't put you there in good conscience.
Well, and, and the other point, I mean, you don't know, I mean, your neighbor might say, hey, I'm cool with how it is now, but I'm not giving you 10 more feet, and then you've got to come back anyway.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's not, doesn't, doesn't fix, I mean, it could fix the problem, but we don't know it's going to fix the problem, and then you got to come back with a new application and-
Okay, so, correct move is to decline and-
My thought would be to table the matter and then renotice it with the-
Table.
With the waiver.
All right, so.
So there'll be a addition, there'll be an amendment to the application for the waiver.
All right. So in that space, everybody good with this?
I make that motion.
Please.
As stated. We table PZ-25-005. Well, apparently I was wrong this morning, because your former parliamentarian was texting me that I was incorrect. So, so I think we should-
We're going all belted suspenders now, huh?
We probably should vote on it.
All right, we're going to get a voice vote on the table, guys. Do I need a second?
Second.
Get one, why not?
I have a second. And we're going to go with a voice vote. All in favor of the table, as signified, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
An opposed like sign. Thank you.
Aaron, the good news, you get to go first. You get to go first next time.
All right. Almost there, guys. Bear with us. Other business. Extension of expiration of policy, period two years. Ms. Barge, is that you?
No, that's me. Soon as I find it.
All right, Ryan.
It's somewhere around here. Okay. So extension of expiration policy, per Article 3, Section 3.2 of our subdivision, subdivision consideration process of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations, preliminary plat approvals are valid for two years, during which time the developers shall proceed with requirements necessary to receive approval of construction plans. When requested, a one-year extension can be granted using a procedure we have outlined. And so that procedure actually has to be renewed by the Planning Commission every two years. And so what we're seeking is a request for Planning Commission approval to renew that extension of expiration policy for planning for the period of another two years. We have a couple subdivisions that are still in that. There's Wolf Lake, Dogwood Estates is in there, Ballard Glenn, Section 3 is in there. So there's, there's a couple that are, that are still remaining in on that, so we need to renew that for another two years.
All right. Ryan, have there been any outliers in the enforcement of this policy or the application of this policy that give us reason to consider something different?
Well, you asked me that, so I had not dealt with the extension of expiration policy in my entire two years here, and Ballard Glenn, Section 3, came in with an approval in December for it, and when I looked, their extension had expired in July, which means they have to go back to the Planning Commission for approval. So that was one of those emails I sent out at 4:30 on a Friday, and then turned my computer off real fast for fear of what I was going to get in return. So I told them they were going to need to come back to the Planning Commission for approval. So that's kind of an outlier, yes.
But otherwise, it's not enough evidence to say modifications to what has been done should be considered. Is that fair to say?
Right. And it essentially just requires, like in that instance, if it does expire, they just have to come back to the Planning Commission for approval, because that period of time has passed. No work has been started, so that's what it brings them to have to come back here.
All right, commissioners, questions?
Questions? So that could impact the school numbers if they come back?
Hold on, and I'll get to that. So if the plan hasn't yet expired, the procedure is, it goes to people of the technical review committee, who then look at their capacity, and if those capacity numbers have changed, if there are capacity issues, or if there's a proposed change to the plan to accommodate capacity issues, then the plan and/or extension of expiration request must go to the Planning Commission. So essentially, somebody applies to it, we send it out to all the people on TRC, and if sewer capacity is not there, or if school capacity changes, it has to come back before you all as well.
All right, other questions? All right, floor will be open for motions.
Mr. King?
Mr. Marsh.
I moved that we re-upped the extension for a period of two years.
Many thanks, Mr. Marsh. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. We'll go with a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
An opposed like sign. Motion carries. All right, last order of business, today's docket. We're looking at election of officers. We'll start with vice chair. Floor is open for nominations.
Vice chair?
Vice chair is up first.
I nominate Katie Nasser.
We have a nomination of Katie Nasser. We have a second. Further. All right. Any additional? Mr. Counsel, can I do this by acclamation?
Yes, sir.
Done. Ms. Nasser, the chair is yours for-
Now it's time to nominate the lovely chair.
I'm second. Nomination for?
My neighbor, friend, and putting, sitting right beside me, Greg King.
And I heard a second?
Thank you, Ms. Nasser.
And no voice vote? Proclamation?
Proclamation.
There we go.
Thank you, Ms. Nasser. Appreciate your continued guidance. Congratulations.
Thank you for lunch.
All right, yeah. All right, Mr. Fisher?
I don't need to tell you all, but we have a meeting next month now, so, we had one anyway, so it's not, it's not any, any fault of our own for tabling anything, but, so we will have a meeting next month. I don't know the date off the top of my head, but my brain quit working about an hour ago. So we'll send out notice, and we'll also probably look at SRC next month as well. We missed a month just because of the sheer number of cases we had this month, but for those of you on SRC, it'll probably be a, probably be one next month.
All right, many thanks, one and all. Anything else for the good of the cause? You ready to go to the House? All right, we're going. Thank you all. We'll see you.